Hearing number two, sorry, three, this is and four, three and four. This is similar to the previous one, different place, annexation and also possible rezoning for about 71 acres. And this is annexation 645 and rezoning 18CZ28. Presenting today, Shelley Mayo. Ms. Mayo?
Good evening. As the mayor read out loud for me, this is for both the annexation and the rezoning. This PUD is called the Olive Chapel Road Assemblage PUD. It's located roughly here, kind of on the westernmost edge of our jurisdiction, out at the very end of Olive Chapel Road. The property consists of, one, two, three, six parcels with about 70.8 acres. It's located here on the southwestern corner of Olive Chapel Road and New Hill Olive Chapel Road. The lots are currently comprised of several single-family homes, outbuildings, fields, and ponds. A historic house is located on one parcel. It's located approximately here. The applicant conducted a neighborhood meeting on July 31st, 2018. That meeting report is attached to your staff report. Let me get through here. Here we go. The applicant's proposing that this be rezoned to PUD CZ. It is currently zoned Wake County Residential ADW, and it's currently outside of our ETJ, which is why the annexation public hearing is on here as well. The 2030 land use map designates this as rural density residential. PUD CZ is an approved zoning district within that designation specifically because this PUD is proposing a maximum density of one dwelling unit per acre. Maximum density within the rural density residential designation is one dwelling unit per acre, so because of that, this PUD is valid within that land use map designation. The applicant has proposed a number of uses on here. They are single-family residential, accessory apartment, greenway, recreation facility, private, utility, minor, park active, and park passive. As I said, the applicant's proposed a maximum density of one unit per acre, that's for a maximum number of 70 units. The minimum lot size is proposed at 11,500 square feet with an average lot size of 15,000 square feet. The setbacks are listed in your staff report on page two. The applicant's also proposed several architectural conditions on page two that kind of run onto page three of your staff report. All of these are consistent with what's generally proposed. The only thing that is different is that architectural condition number 12, which is that all single-family detached homes shall be preconfigured with conduit or solar energy system, is actually being replaced. In front of you, you will see a paperclipped set of sheets, it's two pages. On the top, those are additional conditions as offered by the applicant. We had kind of a run on those today. The first page is the wording proposed by the applicant. The second page is staff's wording. There's just some very subtle differences on here. And actually, condition A, which is the minimum of five residential dwellings to be developed on the property, shall be constructed so as to include installation of solar panels and power system of at least three kilowatts. I spoke with the applicant prior to the meeting and with the understanding that these can be revised as we just discussed with Mr. Roach's application. I was told that they were, is that correct still, that they were okay with the wording? Okay. I just got the nod.
With the modification.
With the modification that, as may be amended from time to time, similarly to what Mr. Roach's just went to. So the second sheet with just the two conditions, staff's wording is accepted with that modification of identified on the final plat and may be amended from time to time. They've also agreed to staff's wording for condition B, which is subject to approval by the North Carolina Department of Transportation and to minimize interference with adjacent uses. The developer shall install a temporary construction access for site development purposes from the site onto New Hill Olive Chapel Road. The temporary construction access shall be removed prior to the major subdivision plat being recorded. Now, what that one basically means is there's a neighbor across the street who runs a horse boarding and riding lessons training facility. She also lives on a parcel immediately adjacent to it. Unfortunately, I don't have a good diagram of this, but basically, her properties are right here at the top across the street. She came to planning board and expressed some serious concerns with the amount of traffic, particularly heavy traffic, that would be coming through during the clearing, grading, and infrastructure phases. She had other concerns as well, but this was one that we felt that could be addressed. And although staff is fine with a temporary construction access for clearing, grading, and the installation of public utilities, once the site is plat, or is platted, excuse me, these roads are required to be open as public right-of-way. And we wouldn't want builders' trucks, which will be much smaller, but there will be more of them, accessing an access easement over here when they have constructed right-of-way here. It would just end up being a very confusing situation. So that's why the phrasing is worded that way.
And staff is not in favor of, and it's not really on this, but a permanent driveway on that road is too close to the intersection?
It would be. It would be, in our estimation, it would be too close, generally speaking, even for a right-in, right-out. It's less than, if it's located roughly here, which is where we would anticipate it at the end of the cul-de-sac, it would be less than 300 feet from the center of the intersection, and that's just closer than we normally want on such a large road. It's one of the primary north-south routes through Apex between Old One and 64, and until we can get more connectivity, it's probably just going to have too much traffic on it. I will, however, let their engineer speak to more engineering-style questions. And then, we had an internal discussion regarding the stormwater management condition that the applicant provided on the first sheet. Staff is fine with that. We just had to have some conversations with the legal department beforehand. So the phrasing on sheet two for A and B is agreed to by the applicant, and staff had no changes to the phrasing for C on sheet one. Just want to make sure that's clear. The applicant is also proposing higher-level buffers. Staff requested in order to maintain the rural character in this particular area, the UDO requires a 30-foot type E buffer along this area, or I'm sorry, 30-foot type B buffer along New Hill Olive Chapel Road and Olive Chapel Road. The applicant has actually proposed 50-foot type B buffers along through there. That was at staff's request so that we could kind of protect that rural character. The other buffers around the perimeter of the property meet the UDO requirements of a 10-foot type B buffer. Although the UDO exempts subdivisions with a maximum density of two units per acre from resource conservation area requirements, the applicant does have to provide 2% because this is being proposed as a mass-grated development. So the applicant's actually proposing 2.93 acres or 4.14% of the RCA. As we discussed earlier, the site also contains a historic structure that's located at 3417 Olive Chapel Road, roughly here-ish. Toll Brothers has committed to preserving that house and to the upkeep for it and selling it as a residential dwelling unit later on. They will be moving the driveway from Olive Chapel Road to connect to the cul-de-sac back here because we want to minimize driveways in Olive Chapel. Everybody knows how busy that road gets, so that is one thing that'll happen here. The applicant's also proposing to preserve all five of the existing farm ponds on the site. Those are located here, there's a little one over here, sorry, over here, here, and then these two, which drain into a third at the bottom, as well as preserving four very large oak trees surrounding the historic house. You can kind of see the arrows here, those identify those four oak trees. They're actually proposing to preserve as many of the existing trees as possible, but these four trees are specifically called out because the smallest one has a diameter of 52 inches. The largest one, if I recall, is 63 inches in diameter, so these are massive. Some of them are almost as tall as, big around as I am tall, so. And they've specifically called these out because staff requested it. We saw it in the neighborhood meeting report and realized how large these specimens are. They'll be required to get arborist reports to evaluate the health and take all the steps necessary to preserve those.
Ask you a question?
If you'd like, sure.
The ponds have already been looked at? They're all structurally sound? Are they going to be able to keep those?
To the best of my knowledge. I am not, however, a pond expert, so my understanding is yes, they will be able to keep those, but you may want to ask the applicant when they come up.
One other question. How do you keep as many trees as possible on a site when it's mass-grated?
So, mass-grading according to the UDO definition just means that more than 50% of the lots will be graded at the time that the infrastructure is put in. So depending on how the lots are set up, if most of the interior lots are, say, here, and that's 50%, just as an example, and most of the trees are in this area or down here, then you can still save as many trees as, you can still technically meet that, and we'll be working with them on that at the site plan, subdivision plan level. But because they're going to be preserving these ponds and they've got these larger areas down here, there's a good chance that they'll be able to preserve a significant amount, despite the fact that they don't have the RCA requirement, per se. And this is mostly farmland, so a good portion of it's already cleared for cattle grazing and things like that, the fields. The, let me see, one moment. Parks and Rec Advisory Commission reviewed this project at their September meeting and recommended a fee in lieu. The total amount of that is in your staff report. The proposed development's also in compliance with the Apex Transportation Plan. The project will connect to Olive Chapel Road via two intersections, one here and one here. The plan also identifies two potential stub streets, one here to the east and one to kind of the southwest-ish here at the bottom. The developers also committed to providing sidewalks along both sides of each internal subdivision street as required by the UDO. In addition, the project will construct sidewalk along their frontage on New Hill Olive Chapel Road, including, excuse me, I have a frog in my throat, this corner here, which is part of the cemetery from the actual Olive Chapel Church. They are not required to do those off-site improvements. Staff asked if they would be willing to in order to connect those two sidewalks and prevent people from walking through the cemetery, and they agreed to. So they are providing some additional sidewalk for us. Planning Board heard this at their November 13th meeting and unanimously recommended approval. Because it recommends, I'm sorry, because it meets the requirements of the 2030 land use map and the UDO, planning staff recommends approval of the proposed rezoning as submitted by the applicant. However, staff notes that the proposed rezoning will not be consistent with the proposed recommendations of Advanced Apex and the 2040 land use map. The Advanced Apex draft recommendations included density reduction to the rural density residential land use class. That would be from one dwelling unit per acre to one dwelling unit per two to five acres. However, because this proposal is going to preserve the rural character of the area by preserving that historic home, the historic farm ponds, and providing a wider buffer along the two main roads, staff does feel that this is in compliance with the 2030 land use map and recommends approval. You have any additional questions? I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, the applicant is ready to answer anything for you.
Questions for Shelley?
I have a few. One is, okay, let me go in order of, I think, and make sure I remember them all. Okay, the two entrances to the neighborhood, that's required based on the size of the development, right?
Correct. Anything over 50 units has to have two entrances.
And the way I'm looking at that, I mean, it kind of splits off, and there's a full access one, and I think a right-in, right-out. So is there a requirement in the UDO or recommendation that the entrances not be kind of like a V like that, or they're kind of connected to?
So we look at it from the connection, from the branch, so anything, if all, if these roads here all led to one connective point here, then there would be, a maximum of 50 units would be allowed from that portion down. Because there's an additional connection here, creating a loop that does connect out this way, that doesn't apply in this particular situation. We have seen situations, though, where we have two roads that provide technically two connections, but they come to a single point, and everything south of that connects through there.
Those aren't allowed.
Those are allowed, but they have a cap on the number of units that are allowed south of that point, or north, or beyond that point.
Okay. My next question was about Olive Chapel Road in general. So I was kind of playing around with Google Maps, looking at the horse circle thing and all that, all that around there. And the Olive Chapel doesn't line up with the rest of Olive Chapel to the west, and so is that in the transportation plan, to have those be parallel, and is this going to lock us into a kind of catty-corner, cattywampus type of intersection? Because they're offset.
They are offset, and there's the existing church right there, and I thought I had a better image of this, but I don't. I do not know if that is in, on our radar at the moment, and fortunately, none of our transportation planners are here, so I can't, I don't want to speak to that in case I speak erroneously.
Okay.
But I can definitely bring it up and make sure that that's a topic for discussion.
Theoretically, if we do want to fix that, and if...
Generally speaking, we do not like that at all. That is correct.
It would be obviously the one to the north, and...
We would have to work with the church to make sure that that, that we're not impacting them too much, and of course, and the property owners on this corner as well. I don't know if we've started looking into that or not, though, unfortunately.
Okay. And the third question I had was about walkability. So I noticed that there was a proposed cross, across the street and accessing the multi-use path or whatever on the other side of the road. When I was looking at it, I couldn't, it looked like the crosswalk was going to be further to the west than what was proposed, or, do you know the status of what that proposed Olive Chapel walking area? Has that been, already started building, or is it in the future, or, and like, line that up with, to get these people to be able to get tobacco trail, is that going to be a problem in the future, the way this is right now?
In the future, it shouldn't. As these develop, they'll build that section. It's possible that the town has money for that now, but it would be unusual, generally speaking, as properties develop, then we install the multi-use paths. We had the developer install the multi-use paths, rather. Again, though, I don't know the specifics on that one, so I can't be 100% sure. I do know that where the location of the crosswalk will be is something that we will clarify and evaluate further at the subdivision plan. This is a very high-level look at it. This lays out the approximate locations of everything, but that all gets fine-tuned as we get more information.
And the crosswalk, how that would look, and like, the striking on the road, or any of that kind of stuff, if it exists, would be on that next...
My expectation would that that would be, that would be a high-visibility crosswalk, whether it has flashers or not, we don't know at this point, but since it is crossing such a high-traffic area, it would probably be a high-visibility one at least, which means that it has several of the thicker bars instead of just the two wide ones going across the street.
I have one more, sorry, this is the fourth, that's a lot, but the, I noticed the TIA was in the, in the document as they're going to do it. What does that mean exactly, when they say they will, in the future, they will do a TIA and not having already done one?
So we do have minimum counts for what's required at this point. This did not meet those minimum traffic counts. It wasn't, I think it's 100 peak-hour trips or 1,000 daily trips. Typically speaking, 70 single-family units isn't enough to trigger that.
Yeah.
If, if one is required at subdivision plan, or if there's a reason for us to need to do, to work with the applicant on one at a later point, then that will happen.
So in the document, it says they're going, I think it says they're going to do it, so that would mean that if there's findings, maybe all this, there are findings that traffic improvements need to be done, that would be, we would have to come back and hear this again?
It would be done at subdivision plan if that were the case. If we determine that there's enough traffic out there and that it meets that threshold, although typically speaking, that wouldn't be the case if their max is at 70 units.
Okay.
I think what they were trying to say was that if it becomes apparent that one is needed, then they will do it.
Okay.
All right. Any others for Shelley?
I have one. So is it possible to eliminate one of those entrances on Olive Chapel Road? And I know you said it can't stay where it is, where the temporary access is, but can it come down farther and still be far enough away from that intersection to be a permanent access?
So when I did a rough measurement of this, the farthest point that you could get in this, like I said, was a rough measurement. I basically went from the edge of this pond, would be about 500 feet. It's possible, but would not be recommended. We generally want more spacing than that. It would, at that point, only be a right-in, right-out, is my understanding. In the interest of preserving those ponds, though, and trying to disturb them to the smallest amount possible, these are really the best locations that have been identified by our transportation planning. And I'll let the engineer for the applicant discuss kind of the more engineering-specific reasons why, but that's my understanding from talking to our transportation engineer and our transportation planner.
And there will be two stubs?
There will be two stubs, both of which will presumably have to have a connection out to the main roads as well. So that will eventually provide us with more outlets and less concentration right there. And we are sensitive to the owner on the opposite side, but just because of the sheer amount of frontage here and the fact that it's not encumbered by these large ponds that we're trying to preserve, it just makes more sense to have them on Olive Chapel. If the ponds were located, you know, here, then we would have more flexibility, but... Anything else?
All right. All right, thank you, Shelley. Is there an applicant that wishes to speak, or a representative thereof, from time to time?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council. Jason Barron with Morningstar Law Group here on behalf of the applicant in this case, Toll Brothers. Excited to be here with this project. Shelley's done an incredibly comprehensive job of essentially stealing all of the things I was going to say. I do want to highlight some, some aspects of her presentation that I think are important. One is, this is, you know, one dwelling unit per acre, 70 lots, over 70 acres, minimum lot size of 11,500 square feet, average lot size of 15,000 square feet, and so those aren't lot sizes we're seeing a whole lot of. We're typically seeing smaller lots as lots are moving along, so Toll will be doing a much larger project in this area than I think we're seeing in a number of other places. There are three, three kind of components of this that are wrapped under the idea of maintaining the rural character of this area. The first is the significant increase in the width of the buffers along New Hill Olive Chapel and Olive Chapel Road, moving from 30 feet to 50 feet in those areas. The second is preservation of the farm ponds, as was indicated, there are five of those there, and Toll is maintaining all five of those. To answer your question, Mr. Moore, they've investigated the ponds, and those ponds are structurally sound and will be, they view them as a great amenity to the site when they go to the market, in terms of how they're going to market the site. And the third relates to the, not only the preservation of the historic home, but the preservation of the historic home, those very large trees around the home, and then the incorporation of those into the community itself. And so it's not, I've worked on a lot of cases, whether it be in Apex or Cary or Holly Springs and other jurisdictions, where a home is quote-unquote "preserved," but it's kind of set off to the side. I mean, it's not really incorporated into the community, and this, as you can see, where the cul-de-sac will be serving the site. I mean, it will be part of the community, kind of a unique, you know, a unique feature to the community. And so that is something that Toll is sensitive to in understanding this area and wanting this community, while certainly a new community, to be able to blend better with the overall built environment in that area. And so they're pleased to be able to incorporate those as part of the case, and I think that's why the planned unit development option exists. You know, it's designed to embrace creative concepts, to be able to maybe have smaller lot sizes than you would otherwise see, even though these are lot, are large, but then to be able to incorporate concepts where, that you don't typically see. And again, I think a lot of these cases that you see, first thing the developer's seeing when they see those five farm ponds is the opportunity to drain those farm ponds and get more lots, and that's certainly not what they are doing in this case. Councilwoman Killingsworth, you asked the question about site access onto New Hill Olive Chapel Road, and one of the challenges, as our team has investigated, we're hopeful to be perfectly candid, the condition that we've offered is subject to DOT approval. We're hopeful to be able to get just the temporary access. We can't guarantee what DOT will approve, but we will tell you that if DOT approves it, we're going to do it. The challenge that we have in any permanent access, the further we get south, is there's significant grade change here, and our commitment to preserving the pond creates a conflict with the ability to put in a road. Basically, the road is a lot higher than the top of the pond in that location, and so kind of related to the point that you were asking about, Mr. Moore, you're related to, are the ponds structurally sound and can they be maintained? They can. The moment we start to introduce a permanent access in that location, we're stuck between a rock and a hard place, and so that is why we don't have an access directly out onto New Hill Olive Chapel.
Or a pond and a hard place.
What's that?
A pond and a hard... You're stuck between a pond and a...
Yeah, a pond and a, pond and a hard place, a pond and an intersection. The last two things I want to know, really, are the addition of the solar condition. Appreciate the staff working with us on language associated with that and hearing the conversation that occurred on the last case, which was invigorating, was helpful.
Invigorating, the pond.
It was, it was inspiring. We're happy to incorporate that, the "as may be amended from time to time" language in that condition. And then also, we understand that water quality, especially in a location like this, is important, and so being able to add the condition that notes that the water quality is being increased for a development of this type is something we're excited to be able to offer. And so with that, we're here to answer any questions. We certainly would respectfully request you all's approval of the case. We're proud of the fact that the Planning and Zoning Board has recommended approval, and we recognize that there are concerns from the adjacent property owner to development of this site, and I'm sympathetic to that, but as you all see in any number of cases, the character of the area, especially in the New Hill area, is changing. I mean, it's, you know, what once was in the boonies, I think, is what the previous applicant had indicated, or certainly the owner had indicated, is no longer the boonies. I mean, it's becoming part of Apex. We think that the conditions that are being offered as part of this case are the right type of conditions that has properties transition in the area. They're sensitive to their surroundings, sensitive to the environmental aspects associated with the, with the area, and again, we would respectfully request you all's approval. Our team is here to answer any questions. If there are engineering questions, I'm going to quickly defer to people who are qualified to answer those. Otherwise, I'll do my best.
Okay. Questions for the applicant? All right. That was good. We'll go to the public hearing then. This time, I'll open the public hearing, and just before I do, I'd like to get a couple of clarifications. So I see the two Snyder's at the same address. I need one speaker from that address, either Heidi or Ella, which one? Which one is that?
Ma.
Which, Heidi or Ella?
Sorry, Heidi.
Heidi, okay, all right, gotcha. Thanks. And it looks like the Tryons? Okay, which, who's going to speak for that household?
I think this household is representing three very different views, and I think this household should be granted the opportunity to all speak.
You can, you just have to share the three minutes.
I think we're all representing very different views.
I'm going to stick with the one person per household rule, so you're welcome to speak all at the same time or share your three minutes however you wish.
I will be the speaker then.
Okay. All right, with that, I'll open the public hearing and call up Tracy Sheltinga, and then after that, Sarah McGrath and Jeff Robke. Hi, please state your name and address and keep you on the lights.
My name is Tracy Sheltinga. I live at 3424 Olive Chapel Road. I am the horse farm owner. And while I am not happy about 70 houses going in right across the street from me, I am not opposing the subdivision. I am, what I'm concerned about is the fact that they're contemplating locating their main entrance directly across from my riding ring and horse barn, which are right on the road. I have a probably historic barn, it was built in the 50s. I can't really move it. So, I mean, this could have a devastating impact on my horses and the horses of the clients who entrust me with them. I'm not only concerned for my horse and clients, I'm also concerned for the safety of everyone who travels on that portion of Olive Chapel Road. I have lived there for 24 and a half years. So I experienced, I've experienced the increase in traffic along the road, and I've come to understand very well the inherent dangers of pulling onto this roadway. We recognize that the left direction is a blind curve, and the other direction has a, has a hill which limits what you can see. a hill, which limits what you can see. So I brought pictures of exactly where they are proposing to put their entrance, and it's crazy. I mean, it's both ways, coming from the right. You can see where it drops off. I don't know if you guys can see it, but I can pass these around. When I'm sitting in the driveway directly across from my barn, where they're going to put the entrance, that pops up. You have very little reaction time. The other direction, the same. You've got a curve. I'm sitting right here. That's when you can get a full view of that vehicle, right on top of you. If you move right down the hill, this is property that they're buying, with nothing on it, there's no reason why they can't put the entrance down further. It won't impact anybody. I took views from that, too. Same way, you have got a mountain of visual from the left, from the right. You can see forever cars coming both ways. So I really don't understand how they say that what they've found is the safest alternative. It can't be. It's just not possible. So, anyway, I've got pictures of how close my barn and riding ring are to exactly where they'll be pulling out. And I just hope you guys will have somebody else look at it and maybe do an independent study before you guys make any kind of decision on where they put that entrance.
All right, thank you, Ms. Sheltinga. If you want to hand those to the clerk, she can pass them around while we're here. All right, Sarah McGrath?
Hey there, my name's Sarah McGrath. I'm from 2403 Rabbit Walk Lane. So I've been a riding student with Tracy at Olive Branch Farm for almost 10 years now, and my competition horse is boarded there. This is him, this is us at a competition. I'm just worried that all of the cars pulling in and out of that neighborhood entrance that's directly across from the barn could cause a large amount of stress on my horse, which could cause him to spook easily. Horses can become really unpredictable and flighty when something scares them, and I like to take my horse on trail rides on Tracy's property. But I'm just worried that it could become dangerous because of all the cars that would be pulling out of that entrance or pulling into the entrance and just zooming past. It could risk scaring my horse. Horses don't really think when they have, about the fact that they have a rider on their back and could just run straight into the road if spooked. This poses a danger to not only the horses and riders, but also to the vehicles on Olive Chapel Road. I know I would not be able to easily stop my horse from running if something scared him, and there are, at our barn, there's a lot more younger beginner students that would not be able to handle the spook of a horse either, which could result in a severe injury to both rider and horse. So here's just one of the students we have. He's very small. Just so imagine a 20-pound child getting run over by a 1,200-pound horse. It could, it's definitely an issue that we're worried about. So I just feel like if the neighborhood entrance was moved, we wouldn't quite have to worry about the cars taking off right outside of the barn and scaring our horses.
All right. Thank you, Ms. McGrath. Jeff Robke?
My name is Jeff Robke. I live at 3108 Craigler Drive. So I moved to Apex in 2001, looking for a great place to raise a family, and thank you for all being stewards of that. In large part, you know, Tracy has had that impact on us. My daughter quickly fell in love with horses. I think it's because at the time, you drove down Olive Chapel Road, there was horses everywhere, so you couldn't really escape them at the time. And after sampling a couple of different sports and not finding the right fit, we started riding lessons with Tracy. Now, what I didn't know at the time was how big of an impact that would have on my daughter. So Emma was shy, a bit anxious. She struggled to share her opinion at school and to speak out for herself. And as she started riding lessons, we quickly learned that horses have a mind of their own. In fact, Tracy coached her quite frequently that if you're not assertive and confident, that the horse won't listen. Over the next, excuse me, she started when she was about four. Over the next six years, she started growing in that confidence, in assertiveness, along with her skills with riding a horse and caring for horses, because it doesn't stop just with riding at Olive Branch Farm. You know, she helps to wipe them down and clean the hooves and understands things like pecking order now. And what I've seen in my daughter is that confidence and assertiveness has continued and expanded outside of these horse lessons, back into school, to the point that this year, she actually joined student council at Olive Chapel Elementary. I could not have imagined this six years ago, right? She was afraid to speak. Now she's on her own student council. It is clear that the ability for my family to drive down Olive Chapel Road and go to a horse farm and meet Tracy and start lessons is part of what I was looking for in a great place to raise my family. Now, before the meeting, I went back and I looked at some of your election platforms, and I think you had thoughtful growth. And Wesley, you had responsible growth. And Mayor Olive, on your website, you have, your belief is that you can manage responsible, you can manage growth while preserving small-town charm. And when I look at this plan and the stress it's going to put on the horses, it really is going to displace something that is important to our small-town charm. The ability for our children to learn something that you could never learn in suburbia. I never imagined that my child would ride horses, that I would have birthday parties there, that I'd get to experience this. And that really is part of the small-town charm I'm looking for. And this current plan and the development is not smart growth. It's not thoughtful, it's not responsible, it doesn't preserve our small-town charm. I appreciate the preservation of the pond and the oak trees, but displacing a horse farm is going to have a much bigger impact to the rural character. This isn't about character, this is about having some ruralness around us. Displacing these lessons is going to have a much bigger impact.
Thank you, Mr. Robke. Heidi Snyder?
Hi, I'm Heidi Snyder, and I live at 1007 Heathwood Dairy Road. I live right off Olive Chapel Road with my husband and my five children. And I'm concerned about the Toll Brothers entrance being directly across from Tracy's barn. My oldest daughter Ella, she's been riding horses since she was five years old. Sorry, I'm nervous. My husband was in the Marine Corps for 20 years, and we retired here three years ago. And so horseback riding has been a constant in her life with all the upheaval of moving in the military. And I'm really grateful that now she's a teenager and dealing with all those things, that she can ride with Tracy. It's helped, horseback riding has helped her navigate the challenges of growing up and become a confident and empowered young woman. Tracy has taught Ella side by side. She actually gets in the ring with her and rides with her, and she gives her longer lessons than we pay for, and she's just really invested in Ella. And I know that Ella's learning from the best, and she's being given life skills, too. I value this time for my daughter taking horse lessons and for my other children to go up there to the barn and pet the horses and pet the cats. And Tracy's large lot is one of the last few undisturbed places in Apex, and my family treasures the time there. And if the Toll Brothers put their entrance directly across from the barn, it changes the safety of the riding ring and the entrance and the exit for all the youth who ride there. I'm proud to live in Apex, the peak of good living, and to raise my children here, but I think a decision in favor of putting the subdivision entrance directly in front of the barn, I think it doesn't seem true to Apex and to our founding and what we represent. I'm concerned that the additional traffic with all the unpredictable sounds will disrupt the serene and safe riding environment for Tracy and her students. She offers a really unique space for youth to grow and develop in powerful ways. We need her students as strong, capable leaders in Apex. We want the next generation of Apex residents to be the kind who look out for the welfare of others, protect safe spaces for children and animals, and who aren't afraid to ride a fast horse. Please protect Tracy's barn for the benefit of our generation and those to come.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Nynette Yangling?
I'm so nervous. I work at a preschool, and this is like, woof, like blowing my brains out. So, my name's Nynette Yangling. I live in 202 Kennethville Court in Cary. And if I could ask you, if you ever, 30 minutes, you just set up a time to go see Tracy teach a lesson with these kids. It's amazing. Like, he spoke a little bit about my kids, she spoke a little bit about my child, so I don't want to repeat that, but Toll Brothers, are you guys Toll Brothers? Nope, who's Toll Brothers? You guys, please take the time to go look, watch her teach a lesson, and consider, reconsider your, where you would be putting this driveway for the horses and everything, and it'll make sense. I mean, just 30 minutes, talk to her. She works at the tack store right up there. Just watch her teach one of those kids, and what she does with them is great.
No, thank you, Ms. Yangling. Okay, Ms. Tryon?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Lori Tryon, and I live at 101 Kenneth Ridge Road. And I have stood before you before to talk about subdivisions and the impact that they have on our lives. But tonight's a lot different. Tonight, I am speaking because the inherent danger that Toll Brothers is presenting by putting that entrance in front, directly in front of that barn, to not only our horses, but our children, is something that you need to consider very carefully. You've heard people talk about horses spooking and not knowing what they're going to do, and that sounds like a lot of ifs, doesn't it? I'm standing here, and mark my word, to say, I'm standing here tonight to tell you that it is a very real scenario. 20 years ago, I sat astride a horse that I trusted and I loved, and he spooked. And to this day, we don't know why or what. I was in a barn in a very remote, serene area. There was no traffic, there was no subdivision, there was nothing. But my horse came out from under me. And one minute I was astride, and the next minute I was laying in an arena. I had no feeling from my waist down, and I was paralyzed. I spent 110 miles in an ambulance going to Duke University with nothing but a hope and a prayer that someday I would walk again, because my horse spooked. I had been riding for over 20 years. I was experienced, I was knowledgeable, and I was good. These are my x-rays. This is the reality that my child and every other child that sets foot on Olive Branch Farm faces. We know the inherent risk that comes with riding, but why would we want to introduce any more danger or risk than that we assume, knowing when we mount a 1,200-pound animal? I am one of the lucky ones. Five days later, I walked out of Duke University Hospital because I had a phenomenal surgeon. But I had to learn to walk, I had to learn to tie my shoes, because a horse spooked and came out from under me. A five-year-old will not be so lucky. A 10-year-old will not be so lucky. Yeah, I let my daughter fall in love with horses. She does. She loves to ride, she lives to ride.
Thank you, Ms. Tryon. Thank you.
Five seconds.
What are you going to say in five seconds?
I could say, thank you for your consideration, and I appreciate the time to speak.
Yes, ma'am. All right, that concludes our public hearing. At this time, I'll refer this back to council for consideration to see if there are any final questions for staff or for the applicant.
I will say, you know, we've all looked at these pictures, and this is something that y'all probably could not see, and it's probably difficult to see there, but that position directly across from the horse farm puts a lot of people in danger turning out of there. If it was moved, that danger would definitely go away. And I would like to prevent, as much as possible, any injuries that we possibly can, as a therapist seeing people paralyzed. I know the dangers of these things as a horse rider myself also. So, you know, I would say that entrance does need to be moved.
How was the entrance designated?
Yeah, and that's what I wanted to talk about. I mean, the entrance, the entrance points as part of the PUD document, as was noted in another case, are anticipated. The questions that are raised related to safety, the grade in that location, visibility, those are all things that will be determined at the time of master subdivision. I mean, that happens with every subdivision plot that goes through the process. And so I would tell you, as it relates to safety concerns and lack of visibility, that is certainly something that will be studied not only by the applicant, but also by the town and the town's transportation engineers to ensure that there isn't a safety problem that's introduced as part of the subdivision.
Because this design is not
It's not engineered.
Not hill-to-this, this is just a conceptual design.
Correct.
The important, if I could, I think the important parts of this are that there are
Two.
Two, and that there are two stubs to go elsewhere eventually.
That's right.
Those are the key criteria at rezoning case. So the latitude, longitude, if you will, for the intersections of the exits are not determined at rezoning, and at subdivision, and Shelley, you can nod your head if you agree, at subdivision time, that's when we would work with our traffic engineers and any other engineers to find the safest location.
Including NC DOT. I mean, this is a DOT road. You know, there are a handful of engineers who are going to have to review any final proposed locations, whether it be full movement or right in, right out.
So I have a question for you, I guess, with the process. So I think 50-foot type B is ample amount of kind of coverage to across the street. So when you guys review these plans, the first submission of the subdivision plan, so do you give them a kind of an area where the driveway should go, and is there some leeway, and you kind of say, let's move it over here a little bit because it will not conflict? Or how's that kind of process play out in the next step?
There's a couple of different ways that can work. A lot of times, the engineers for the applicant will actually work with our transportation engineer and transportation planners ahead of time, kind of say, hey, look, these are the, especially once we get surveyed topography, say, look, this is where the grade is, we know that we need a minimum distance from the intersection over here in order to be able to get a full movement access, those kinds of things. And then the first submittal comes in, and there's a pretty, they're pretty close to where that final one is going to be. The other op, and we'll still give them comments on that based on, hey, shift it this way, shift it that way, this is going to be the better option for you. The other option is that they submit what they think is the best option, and we look into all of that, and we give them very significant comments, sometimes requiring them to go back in and redesign. So either way that happens, we're still going to try to do our best to end up with the optimal location for that full movement access.
And sometimes you want it to be across from another road, but maybe in this case, that might be a different calculation for you guys.
I think one of the things that they looked at, and we do try to make, and it's hard to see on this, I think we accidentally cut off the approximate, the labels on here actually say approximate road location. But I think what they were trying to do was that, without looking at the topography out there, because they don't look at that until we start getting into more engineered drawings, was they were trying to line these up because it seemed to make the most sense to line them up with the driveways to avoid as many conflicts as possible. When we get into the subdivision phase, we start seeing a lot more of that topo, and we get into a lot more of the nitty-gritty. And at that point, it would be like, okay, well, it might make sense in a certain way to line it up and avoid that type of conflict, but if the topography is as extreme as those pictures show, which I have no doubt, I'm not questioning. I'm not questioning, then the conflicts that could be avoided by lining it up would be far exceeded by the number, by the amount of traffic conflicts that would be increased by leaving it there. So shifting it somewhere else would make more sense at that point. Now, I can't guarantee at this particular moment that that is exactly what will happen, but more than likely, that is what will happen.
But you can tell us the process that you'll go through.
And there's, there'll be a, it's unlikely the managers would move to the west because of the distance you want from New Hill.
It might move slightly, but not by much, more than likely.
But there's probably more wiggle room on the other side, possibly.
Probably.
Probably, okay. And then we would see that plan come back, it'll come back to us.
You review master subdivision plans?
We can talk about it again.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And at that point, we would also show, the drawings would also show the driveways across the street as well in a little more detail.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions from council?
I do a bit, because recently, we looked at 540 Flex, and they put in buffers along the edge of their property, six-foot high plus, I think they're more like eight-foot high. And I guess what my question is on this is, depending on where the entrances are or located, is there a possibility that the developer can put in a buffer which would prevent? I can't say it would prevent, because I'm not a horse person, but I would think that if there was a buffer there of foliage so that horses can't see what's coming out.
Do you mean on the opposite side of the road, Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
That would, it is a possibility, but that's something that the applicant or his representative would have to respond to.
Yeah, he would have to, they would have to make that decision.
Which, you know, he's here, so if you want. I don't know that that's something they're, they can commit to at the moment.
Are you talking about some sort of vegetative buffer on the other side of Olive Chapel Road?
Yes. Just where the, where the horse barn is, or, you know, are in front, if, depending on where the roads come out onto Olive Chapel, buffer that, that zone specifically so that there's less interaction between the horse farm and the people coming out of the, out of subdivision. It seems to me it's, all things carried, all things considered, it's not a big expanse...
Right.
...to take and do something like that.
Yeah, and that's something we could talk about. I mean, that would, I don't think that would be part of this plan approval because it's an offsite improvement. I don't know if the town attorney or Diane have an opinion on that. I think that's a conversation that we're willing to have with the adjacent owner. I mean, recognizing that the amount of traffic that we would be generating on this site kind of pales in comparison to the overall amount of traffic that Olive Chapel is going to be carrying. And so I, and certainly, I understand the concerns associated with how vehicular traffic is going to have an impact on the horses that are on that property, but whether this site develops or not, there's going to be a lot of traffic on Olive Chapel Road. We certainly want to make sure that as we line up the driveways, we're doing so in a safe fashion, not only for folks coming in and out of our site, but also for other sites. But I think that's a conversation that we can have with the adjacent property owner.
I'd ask you to do that.
Okay.
I think that might help.
Okay.
I have another question for staff, I guess. I know the transportation plan had some sidewalks that are slated for Olive Chapel that haven't been built yet when they develop, and so that side will have it, but, so, do we know if there's even any room between the sidewalk and other structures on the property that you think we could put there?
I don't have that information at the moment. The best I can do is show you this aerial, which doesn't do a great job. I was more focusing on this part of the property when I took it. I think this is roughly the ring, is that correct? Or the barn possibly, and then this is your ring?
The barn is right close to the road. You can't see it because of all of those trees that, by the way, are no longer there because of water line.
This is, this aerial was actually taken in October, so these trees are still there.
Okay, so right there?
Right here.
Yep, and then the riding ring is back to your right a little bit there, and then there's a smaller one.
Okay, so maybe...
Right here.
Okay. So, my guess is that this is roughly where the water line went. Our sidewalk may go within that same easement, but it's not going to go on top of the water line. So it would be getting fairly close to the ring. Now, without some kind of outside funding or something put on the capital improvement plan, there's very low likelihood that the town would be paying to install the multi-use path through there. So more than likely, the only way that would get built would be if this property redevelops, which we are not in any way forcing or encouraging necessarily, we're just stating a fact, is all. At present, I don't know of any funding or any designation on the capital improvement plan for that, so.
Okay.
At least in the short term, there are no plans for it.
Okay.
There's just sidewalks on the south side of the road.
There will be sidewalk with this development on the south side.
Install it, yeah.
Mm-hmm. South and east in this case.
Is there a motion?
I think this is conceptual, as the mayor said, in terms of the driveways coming out and things like that. So, from that standpoint, and if the applicant is willing to ensure that there's buffers across the street, or is going to work towards that. Under those, that situation, I'm going to make up a motion to approve.
One second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve, and just for clarification, we have the conditions, so let's make sure we're, are we considering the conditions that were revised by planning staff and with the amended from time to time?
So, we have staff's A, which has been amended to, to say, as may be amended from time to time after the term final plat.
Yep.
We have staff's B.
Yep.
As written, and then we have applicant's C.
Okay, applicant's C, okay. So does everybody understand that?
Yeah.
All right.
Can I clarify whether Mr. Jensen is asking for an additional condition regarding the buffers on the neighboring property, or is that...
We're not offering an additional condition with respect, we're happy to have the conversation. We don't know if there's any room for it, we haven't had a conversation, we haven't looked at it. I mean, we're happy to have a conversation with the adjacent owner, we don't control that property, don't know how that would end up panning out, and so I don't know if we have a condition to be able to offer along those lines, because we don't have any detail to be able to give you.
Well, the condition would be then you work with the, with the property owner across the street, if we're going to do a condition, to determine whether there is feasibility, that's all. Not a commitment to put anything in, but if it's feasible, then I would expect that that could be done.
Excuse me a second. I was on the list to speak, and I do have something to actually say about the buffers.
I'm sorry.
I was supposed to turn down Dr. Johnson-Russell.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Russell. Somehow I missed you. Yes, I see you, I apologize. Thank you for identifying. If everybody will allow me, I'll reopen the public hearing. I just skipped that one, that was my fault.
I appreciate that.
Dr. Russell, and since I don't have a street address, could you state your name and address?
Johnson-Russell, I live at 325 Quail Ridge Drive. Moved to the Apex area in 85, been practicing here ever since. Moved to, actually to Zeno Road, where it was sort of the similar thing. We had horses, development came along and sort of obliterated everything, unfortunately. But what I wanted to talk about was just two, several things. First was the health of the horses. Having, having an entrance right there, it has a very negative impact, it's going to increase all kinds of health issues, stomach ulcers, chewing problems, increase the rate of colic death of the horses. I'm not saying it will kill the horses, I'm saying it increased the risks. Half of my problem with dealing with horses, it's not just the risk of danger to the horse, when I'm dealing with a horse, I have to think about the horse owner and the health and safety of that horse owner. And I have been the victim of idiots on roads, doing malicious things when I was on horseback. I've had people honk, I've had people flash their lights just in an attempt to get the horse to spook. Having an entrance exactly across from the riding ring invites that kind of malicious, ugly thing. For me, I'm not bringing it up lightly, I have several bones that aren't shaped the way they used to be because of people that acted that way. I have a tooth missing because of a horse that spooked and kicked. It's, to put a vegetative barrier, it's not going to work, it's not going to be dense enough, it's not going to be high enough to stop headlights from going over and blinding the horses. You're going to have to have a large wall. You may have to do a berm with a wall, but you're planting a few trees is ludicrous, it's not going to do a thing to stop headlights at night when Tracy's doing lessons from shining directly in the horse's eyes, blinding them temporarily, blinding the students temporarily, and causing accidents. And again, half of my job is keeping the horse owner safe, and if you do this, you will not be keeping the horse owner safe. Half of my problem too is the liability, and I worry about the liability for people that would put a road in there. I worry about the liability for people that would approve putting a road in there when you know it will cause a problem. And I urge you to table this for now, until they make a motion that they're going to move the road and/or put in a visible, permanent barrier to where headlights won't go there. If people can't see that there are people on horseback there, they're not going to do the malicious behavior. But I can't count the number of times I've been riding close to a road and have people do stupid things, honk their horns, flash their lights, throw beer cans, and having an entrance right there invites that kind of activity.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson.
Thank you, please consider it.
All right, and then I'll close the public hearing again. And I don't think anybody up here takes any of the concerns lightly, it may feel like we do, but I don't believe we do. I also, I also know that as we're considering it, and I realize we've got a motion and a second, so I want to make sure we have an opportunity for any discussion while we have that. So do you have a...
Well, I just, I want to say that I do appreciate, you know, taking into account, you know, the water quality in this particular, in the condition C that they're offering, and how it's stated. So I think that will help quite a bit, especially considering how close this is out toward Jordan Lake and needing to protect that, our drinking water out that way. So, and I also, you know, I'm just going to kind of restate this, I really don't want to see that entrance directly across from that barn, so.
All right.
Yeah, I have something to add. I am, I like the cul-de-sac of this neighborhood, I like the one, you know, the 10,000 square foot and, you know, above, I think this is very unique, this is something I think will bring a lot of value to Apex. I am sympathetic to across the street and what's being dealt with over there, so I do hope staff, I realize that a major subdivision plan is legislative in nature, and, but I hope that as staff looks at the entrance to this neighborhood, that they consider what's going to be across the street and where these cars and lights are going to be shining. As a horse person myself, growing up, I understand the dangers with that, so I do like the preservation of the ponds and the trees on this property, I think that's phenomenal, it's great to see that with a development in Apex, so I'm in favor of this.
Okay. Any other comments?
I'd like to just comment to the developer. When I suggested a buffer of sorts there, I wasn't indicating, as Dr. Russell said, trees, I was indicating that something like holly bushes, things that are very dense by Burnham, plants that grow up to 10 or 12 feet, that's, I just want to clarify that, so that it's, we're not talking about trees, and possibly you could put a fence, look at putting a fence in there too, right across the street from the entrance.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second discussion. If there's no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, that passes unanimously, and I think concerns have been heard by staff, by the applicant, so we'll trust y'all to work offline as the subdivision plans are being made, and to work with safety, our traffic engineers, to make sure that safety is considered. If there's no objection from council, we'll take a five-minute recess?
Yeah.
All right, five-minute recess.